Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call our work session budget meeting to order. Thank you, those who are joining us virtually. I think Councilmember McNair is on the line. Councilmember McNair, can you hear us? All right. I'm assuming she's on Jennifer said, so.
She is on.
All right. So council will start.
Yes, sir, I hear you.
Okay.
I hear you well.
Welcome.
Good morning.
All right, good morning. We'll start with the invocation. If we could, we'll go to Councilmember here for the prayer immediately following. If we could repeat the Pledge of Allegiance while standing.
Thank you, Mayor. Always love to communicate with the Lord. Dear Lord Jesus, once again, I, we thank you. I thank you for a good, good day, good night, good sleep, good rest, good protection. Thank you, Father, for life and health and strength. Lord, this morning, as we move forward to approve our budget agenda today, we thank you, Father, for the communications we've had with staff. We thank you that they have been listening and we have been working together, all of the colleagues together. We just ask you to help us to continue to move forward and expand and improve the life of our citizens within the city of Fayetteville. We ask you, Father, to continue to open up doors of communication and partnership with stakeholders and municipalities wherever we step, wherever the mayor goes. We ask you all these great things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilmember here. And we have some special guests over here. I have our interns. We wave to them. Let's give them a round of applause. And they agreed to take this gavel over if we go past 45 minutes. I'll be right over there, okay?
Mayor, I move to approve the 2025-26 agenda. I mean, budget, please.
Wait, wait. Say what now?
I move to approve the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 City of Fayetteville budget.
I thought we were still in the process of that.
Well, everything we're going over today, Mayor, we've gone over for two meetings. If anything, they have taken from the blackboard, okay, from the parking lot and put it within our, all of our requests within this. So outside of the blackboard or the parking lot, as we call it, what other discussions are we going to have unless we're going to continue to lower the tax rate for citizens of Fayetteville?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I want you to hold that zeal.
You don't get a chance to pull that back, sir.
All right, well, let's go to the approval of the agenda first.
And also just wanted to make a note that Mayor Protim is not here and we've had discussion, so I do have her vote.
Look, look, we got.
My hand caught two times.
Well, he was voting for you last week, so. All right. So we got a motion by Councilmember Honduras, I believe, to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second, and by Councilmember Green. And we'll get to the budget shortly. All right. Those, council, any discussion? I'll look to you for your votes to approve the agenda. Councilmember McNair?
It's green for me, sir.
All right. Okay, I think that is unanimous by those present. All right. Discussion on the proposed budget for 25-26. So Mr. Hewitt, who's, is that Mr. Yates?
Well, Mayor, yes, Mr. Yates is here. But we are happy to move in any direction y'all would like. As Dr. Hare mentioned, at the last meeting, we had taken the parking lot items and we had incorporated those into the budget with the funding stream, not having to change the revenues. And, and so we are just standard to your pleasure as to how y'all would like for us to proceed. Are there additional wants that you have? Jeff can go back over the presentation that he gave last Thursday. Just tell us how you'd like to proceed.
All right. Mr. Yates, come on down. All right. Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, counsel, for going along with me earlier. I hope that we can move forward and get out soon today. Have a busy, busy day. As I look at our parking lot, and one item that did stick on my mind the last time we were here and what I see continuous this morning, I thought it was a part or included in, in our notes. See, I should still have them here. The, the, they call it the speed radar. And I'm thinking that is the, that is the speed sensors for the 75. What is that number or what is that? Is that an arrow after the dollar sign, sir? What is that?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
So this was just an indication this was new and added to the budget. So the dollar sign that increased, that was just an increase. The speed radar signs, about 10 of them, they're about $7,500 apiece. So we've added the $75,000. So that's included in the budget.
Okay, okay. Because there was no line drawn through it. That's the only reason.
Right. Everything on this table, on this chart, this is the work you, if you remember, we did last week. Everything struck through is currently not included in the budget that's on your agenda for Monday night. Everything else that is still there with the green, the boxes around it, except for the lake rivers pools is included and the lake river pool is also included.
Now, one additional thing that I had a concern about and I was studying over it last evening. And if, if it's in our book, please let me know. I went over the notes that I had with me. I have been a big supporter of our incentive program. I know we had a little something about construction and contractor, whatever it falls up under, incentives. Is there a budget or is that something that's? Explain how that is in this budget. Is there a budget for like the lowering of permits or the waiving of this or that? Is that something that would be discussed in our budget?
Okay, so there's a couple of strategies. You wouldn't see us specifically. And this is also an answer to your question, Mayor, that you had asked me earlier. The, we have funding for Hub, the Hub Business Center that helps train general contractors and helps folks get started in their businesses. That's a two-year contract. The funding is in '25, stretches across two years. So you won't see us specifically in the budget, but it is funded for '26 through the contract we have today. So that is included. Then also you have the million dollars on the permitting side, if that's, if I understand your question correctly. And we also are continuing to the extent the state law allows our MBEWVE programming.
Okay. Now, my, maybe my last question for right now goes to the CIP. And our CIP, the money, the funds that go, they get in the CIP, which, am I understanding that, that, do they all come from the state? Or they're all pieces put in from, well, from our municipality? And the question is, well, I know this answer, but say it out, say it out loud for our public. The way that we get funding for those projects is through the voting of our FAMPO board?
For some of the projects. So there's a variety of funding sources in the CIP. Some of those are state funding, some of those are federal funding, some of those are local sources. The state and federal funding typically has some version of strings attached, meaning how the procurement process has to flow and all that other stuff. But the funding from FAMPO, for instance, for Glenville Lake is included in the capital program.
You know where I was headed because you spoke what I was going to ask.
Right. So the Glenville Lake project, mostly funded by FAMPO, is included in our CIP.
Okay. That's all for now, Mayor. Thank you.
And all the anticipated FAMPO projects with FAMPO funding are included.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So did have a, did have a question before I go to Councilman Honduras. So council, I had sent you out a couple of things from the site selectors meeting in Savannah with notes that talked about the things that site selectors are looking for. These are the people who are out. Companies find them to go find cities and locations. And it was good to be there to understand the dynamics of what, what they are looking for. And Robert had some strategies that he felt, some areas of that process that we were not present. And I sent that out to you as well. We had put 250 in. I think it actually totals up to maybe like 325, if you look at those bullet points that he has. I do think that will yield some significant returns for us. You know, as a follow-up to that meeting, there's some things we need to do as a community to prepare for that, you know, some of these data center opportunities. And I talked to him a little bit about that and he's going to come talk to us as a council. But I wanted to see if we could potentially look at, at making that an amount that would match what was in his proposal, which was a one or two-year initiative, which was just a little over the 250. I didn't have that list completed at the time. But if you look at it, whatever that total is, is what it is. Because we want to make sure we're, we're prepared. And then I didn't, the last question, Mr. Yates, before you, before you got away, well, two questions. One, what was our ultimate decision on the sidewalks? So we, do we plan to enhance and ramp that up at all to execute that? I know that Councilmember Thompson's been real adamant about the schools. I know that there are some things that we know that we don't need a new study to tell us that we don't have them, where we have them. What was the, what was the, because it's still a question mark on the board as to what, if anything, we plan to invest in that. I would hate for us to just default it back because we're behind schedule on that. So didn't want to hear about, about that. Of course, we're going to use whatever we can to leverage grants, but we still need to show some commitment. I'd hate to see that big of a reduction in that. And then finally, Mr. Yates, what I was hoping we would cover today was the source of where this is, where this comes from. So now you know what the numbers are. I sent some things. I mean, council, I don't, I don't know how prudent we would be doing our job if we just took the revenue side and not looked at any of the expense side. Now, I sent something out about licensing and subscriptions for, you know, these Microsofts. You saw the cameras were 2 million, the, the ongoing support for it was a million, you know. So there may be some things that we've changed that I just asked them to look at across the organization with, on the expense side.
So I'd like to start with Byron and Jeff to answer the question about the sidewalks and how much is programmed for next year. And I think we had answered the question that we were able to successfully use all the funding to address the sidewalk infrastructure issues that we had. But if y'all could recap that again for.
Yeah. Let me get my notes and I can get you the exact dollar figure for this fiscal year. But as far as the additional funding, there, there were no general fund dollars that were programmed toward the sidewalks. All of the funding that we were programming to the sidewalks for fiscal year '26 were either utilizing the general obligation bond, some LAP funding that we received from FAMPO or finishing up a direct, a direct grant that we got from the state. So there were no additional general fund dollars above what we had programmed from bonds, grants, things like that.
Yeah, and I understand that. So I guess the basis of my question is, would you say that our sidewalk plan is complete? So do we have all the sidewalks in our city that, that we currently need?
Well, no.
Okay. So then there's room for more sidewalks to be added if more money was available?
Oh, yes.
I think we presented $700 million worth of needs Monday.
Okay, all right. So, so my point is, is that I don't know how we can pass a budget and don't have any contribution from it. I mean, anything we do is over and above and helping us to catch up because we're not, we're not fully sidewalk and walkable. So even though you've got money that the general obligation bonds have done and you, I commend you for doing that and leveraging grants. I'm just saying, council, what kind of message do we send when we're in a situation where we're behind, where we don't put any, any general fund dollars in it?
Well, Mr. Mayor, this is really the conversation that I hope y'all would have. I wish we had it in January, February. If the council is, is interested, we definitely can come back with an ongoing appropriation every year that is baked in the budget from the general fund, from your general tax rate, that does not move. You do that with your CIP, I mean, with your capital funding plan. Right now, we are proposing how much, Jeff, to go four cents. So if the council were to say every year, regardless of whether we get grants, regardless of whether we get another geo bond referendum, we want the equivalent of one penny, a half a penny, a tenth of a penny on the tax rate to go there. That absolutely works. Can do it for sidewalks, streets, and everything. What that does, though, it does remove the flexibility then if we're trying to keep a relative tax rate for some of the things that do creep in on the budget. Some of those, as you identified, the council did, are one-time costs and some of them are annual cost. But where we are at the moment, if the council is desirous of saying that we want to put 250,000, half a million, that really is the policy decision that y'all tell us and we go back and we try to find it or adjust the tax rate to accommodate that. But you've made the point and I think, and no one disagrees. We have, as Byron said, $700 million in sidewalk needs that we identified from the pedestrian study. And those are just in some priority areas. We have paving needs that are also on the cusp. Even if we were to just stay current, the cost of asphalt, the cost of, of the contracts go up and up. And so the best way to do that is probably to allocate or give direction as to how much of, of the tax rate you want to put toward infrastructure. Just maintain an infrastructure and that would be very helpful.
Right. So I guess, I guess longer term, yes. But for this discussion, for this budget, I, I don't see us adopting a budget with zero for that number, particularly when priority number four is evaluate, expand transportation, other connectivity for residents. So, I mean, even if it's some of the higher, most pressing, if you take that presentation that you gave us on Monday and you identified one that was close to a school or a high-use pedestrian area, let's say we fund that one thing, something tangible that we can see at the conclusion of this. I like the longer-term conversation, but I mean, short-term, I think, I think that would show that we're committed to a $700 million shortfall.
And Byron, could you share from your notes what is in the budget for next year at the moment?
So for fiscal year '26, the sidewalk program was getting 1.1,221,696. And then from fiscal year '27 through '31, it was $500,000 annually is what's programmed in currently for sidewalks.
And with $700 million, how many years does that take? About 150?
Quite a few.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is that not including the geo bond money, the 12 million that we asked for sidewalks? Where's that money when it comes to the 2026 sidewalk?
Give me a second. Because we've already appropriated a lot of the geo bond for sidewalks already. Those are the projects that we're working on now to complete out the 2018 PED plan.
So how much is left then in the geo bond for sidewalks?
There would be some portion of that 1.2 million for '26.
So out of 12 million that we allocated, we got approved by our constituents in 2022. We only have one and a half million dollars left.
Well, it wasn't, it was not 12 million for sidewalks. The public infrastructure was 25 million total. 15 of that was paving. It was about eight is what we programmed in for sidewalks.
Okay, now, when Mr., uh, uh, the guy that gave us the sidewalk pedestrian plan.
Edelson.
Yes.
Zack Bug.
Yeah. When he came and gave us the presentation, he said that none of that was funded. So out of the pedestrian plan and the supplemental pedestrian plan, none of that is funded. That is just a study on what needs to be funded to improve our walkability in the city, correct?
What was presented Monday was the updated PED plan and the supplemental school plan. Yes, none of, none of, there is no construction funding currently appropriated for those projects.
And you just finished saying normally every year we only spend a million and a half dollars for sidewalks?
Uh, 500,000.
500,000 for sidewalks. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Honduras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the manager and staff for getting this budget. We added, I think, five or six million last week to the budget. I did want to ask you about the economic development stuff you talked about briefly. So any more we can, discussion we can have on that, I would like to have to the manager's comment. I would, I would be supportive of adding funding for sidewalks to be recurring in every budget in our, in our CIP. Starting with this one, yeah, sure. I just want, I asked this question Monday. I don't know if you were here, Mayor, and I don't know if any of, some of the other colleagues might not have been here, but in our budget, the budget work book, G20, on fire, budget highlights. So it looks like, if I'm reading this right, about 33 million and change of their total budget is for salaries. And then you got the breakdown of the rest of the funding. And then similar on page G41 for police. Out of their total budget, there's about 61 million and change for salaries. And then you got the rest of the breakdown for equipment and technologies and all the stuff they need. I just want to make sure the public safety compression that was on the, in the parking lot and on the whiteboard that got into the budget, I just want to hear it for a second time, that it's going to increase the salary number by their respective number for each department and that the rest of the budget numbers are not going to change. So it's going to be all of this plus their portion of the compression?
Yes, that'd be true.
Okay. So I don't want to get into this budget, when we get into the actual next year, it's different. I just wanted that on the record. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm confused by some of the things we as a council are moving forward with. And I want my colleagues to help me understand this. We do studies upon studies upon studies. And then we want to do another study without doing something about the study that we just got finished presenting. We have a gun study going on. We got a pedestrian study going on. We got a study for one way in, one way out. And I look on the board, now we want to do a UDO study for a million dollars for permitting. How can we move forward with additional studies if we're not putting funding to rectify the studies that we just got finished spending money on? Somebody help me answer that question. And why are we still spending more money on studies without resolving the studies that we did, i.e. for the pedestrian plan? I don't see how we can put a million dollars in a UDO study when we just got finished saying we only put $500,000 a year in the sidewalks.
Yeah, and I think the labeling to that is a little singularly focused. So what that is was the permitting process. So it's not necessarily only the UDO as a document. It is to make the process easier for permitting, which, you know, again, there's only two sides to the coin. There's the revenue side and the expense side. Like, we can figure out how to spend money, but if we don't put some concentration on how, where the money is coming from and what's generating it, then I think we're, we're short-sighted as to never having enough of it. So I think that doesn't have the full label. It's basically the permitting process that we have been talking about, that other communities did to make it easier for, for development. But a part of that has to have the document that, that we use, you know, not meaning it like this, but quote unquote, the Bible or the roadmap that, that we use to refer to. That's why they have that labeled like that.
I'm, I'm tracking, Mr. Mayor. I understand that we can walk and chew bubble gum at the same time. But what I don't understand is, how come we're not fixing something that we did a study on before we move forward with another study? Especially when we're talking about a million dollars.
Right.
So if we want to do something this year about our pedestrian plan that we have spent money on for a pedestrian plan and a supplemental pedestrian plan for schools, how about we take some of that money that we want to use for studies and put it towards that? Then wait till next year to do a studies. That way, we're knocking them off one at a time.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can, about the studies for the pedestrian plan, the stormwater studies, the one-way in, one-way out, the studies we do in transit, the ones that we do at the airport, a sustainability plan, even the cost of gun violence study. Quite often, when you are applying to state, federal, or philanthropic organizations for funding, they want to know how you're going to use the money, what is the need? And as Byron mentioned, we had a 2018 pedestrian plan and working a little money here, a little bit money there. Were able to successfully apply for how much from FAMPO, just generally.
It was a little over $5 million.
And so without that study, we would, may not have been able to do it. So this actually helps you make some money. That's why you up, you redo them. The thing that Byron also said is, is that typically we spend, and again, we messed this up, $500,000 on sidewalks. But in the budget that is in front of you, that there was consensus at the last meeting that y'all were happy with, how much are we spending in that upcoming fiscal year?
'26 is a little over 1.2 million.
So we're more than double what we typically spend. If, and I would only say that, and I, and I say this absolutely lovingly, and I, no disrespect, I've said it every year I've been the manager. The number one thing that we struggle with is in recruiting and retaining talent. The council has seen that in the support that you've given to the staff. Y'all saw it in, in the direction that y'all have given us in the budget for firing police on compression issues. And that is really, when we start looking at the budget, what drives who we are. When you look at your overall budget, and I'm glad that Councilmember Honduras actually started reading the percentages of the staffing. We went through a very comprehensive process over the last three years where things that were in your budget before, that we took for granted, we have cut out. Two years ago, you may remember, the police department had in a, an "Are you OK?" program that where citizens could sign up if they were elderly and every day it would call them. And if they didn't pick up or didn't press the code or whatever, somebody would go to their house. We took that out of the budget because we found out there was another program that aging or someone else was using. We have bumped up our vacancy number, again, to balance this budget. I say all of that to say that some of the stuff that fell out of this year's budget that the staff looked at, some of the things such as right-of-way mowing, which we should have kept in the $400,000. But there are still some very, very deep cuts that the departments have in their budget. I would be lying if I didn't tell you that the chief of, a fire chief is not always concerned about his overtime budget. Is that a fair statement, chief? Even with the compression issues which y'all are dealing with, this budget is not just what's contained in the book. There are so many things which we still are moving left and right. And so we're always happy to look at the expense side. We do. We've looked at it. That's why, in part because of the annexation payments, the budget that we presented and the budget that y'all gave consensus to at the last meeting is eight and a half million dollars less than the budget that you adopted in the current fiscal year we're in. Those savings, we have, again, don't want to say it's, we've cut eight and a half million dollars out of the budget. That also is the annexation payments that we're no longer making. It also includes the, is it eight or 10 million dollars in lost sales tax? Now that we're on the new sales tax formula. One of the reasons it takes us so long to do the infrastructure is because we are, we're constantly trying to take care of what's most important, first, second, and third. And so I would welcome the conversation now or at the, and whenever council wants to have it, about how much we allocate for those infrastructure pieces. And we even go and take a look at something like the Parks Recreation Master Plan. Ask us how much of that is funded.
Just want to follow up, Mr. Mayor. And I'll, and I'll leave this subject alone. And I understand everything you said, Ms. Dr. Hewitt. But I talked to my state and federal legislators for funding. And the first thing they asked me is, well, but do you have a design? So if we don't have nothing designed, even though we did the study, they're not going to give you a blank check if they don't know how much it's going to cost. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. And, and just to follow up on, on some context behind this, before the year, whatever year it was, we did the Parks and Rec Bond, the city's approach was pay as you go, you know? Whatever money you got, we're going to spend it, you know? If it's $100,000 a year for sidewalks. So what happens is your city keeps growing, but your investments fall behind because you're not borrowing any money. So really, our debt capacity was so high, which is rare amongst other communities our size, that we fell behind. So we did a couple of bonds that helped us caught up, get caught up. Parks and Rec Bond helped us get caught up with 35 million of new money. This, this bond that was passed last time helped us get caught up. And we're seeing that the community is amenable to it if they can see the outcome to it. But what happens is, we had all of those studies, right? A lot of which had, went on the shelf and got outdated. You know, there's no way we should be just now implementing the 2018 pedestrian plan study in 2026. Right? And so it has to be at some point that we start thinking from '25 to ahead. And so some of this can be taken back to the citizens and bond if you're good stewards of it. That's why we've got to close out some of these projects. But what we're doing right now is we're putting the cost of a bond onto their backs with this six or seven cents, which I'm not saying is not needed, but you're still doing it anyway. You're assessing it without specifics as to. specifics as to any one particular group voting on it or saying so. You know, we adopt this budget, it's got a six percent. That's more than the increase from the last two bonds. There was three percent for Parks and Rec, and how much was the infrastructure bond? Extra, what, four percent? So what we're talking is equivalent of the last two bonds. So I think we've got to figure out how we keep pace. We're behind. You asked about the studies. I don't think everything needs to be studied. Like, a lot of that we're contracting out because just, I guess, staff capacity that that we do it, but it slows it down. I said this yesterday when we were talking. We're getting a Thanksgiving meal, and sometimes we just need a, just need a snack. Yeah. And so, you know, I think we've got to balance that. I do, you know, commend the managers' thoroughness on that, what you can leverage, but you've got to do it in a, in a way that that is still good information. Yes, sir.
Is this the appropriate time for us to make a motion that my colleague mentioned about putting some funding in for sidewalks, for C I P for future years? So we don't have to worry about doing this, and he already has. I don't know how much it would be, but if, can we do somebody's research? If we was to go a half a cent, how much would that yield every year for sidewalks so we can get out of this not being a walkable city phase? And that way we don't have to keep regurgitating this year in and year out?
If I can jump on that real quick before Jeff does. Yep, you can do that. I would probably, I would recommend that we bring that back to you in August because not only the sidewalks are concerned, the paving was a concern. There are also concerns about the tennis courts. We wonder why we don't have had to pave all twelve at one time.
But I'm only talking about public safety, sidewalks and and street paving.
I know, but I want to, I want us to lay up all of those for you, public safety, sidewalks, all of those.
But we want our budget adopted by June thirty. So I mean, I'd say, don't conflate the two. So what he's saying is if, if a portion of of a committed amount
Right.
can be put in starting with this budget year, then you bring all that back, but
We can do that.
A budget adopted.
We, we can do that, and I guess for for simplicity.
But that don't mean that you would take the money out of this year's budget because we already have one and a half million for sidewalks for this year.
Right. So what, yes, yes, sir, I got you. And thank you for that clarity. And thank you, Mayor. The question I would would ask you guys would be, how much would you want to dedicate in the upcoming fiscal year above the one point two or one point five that Byron mentioned?
Well, that's why I asked because I don't know how much a half a cent will yield or a quarter of a cent will yield. That's why you got something that you could bring back in August.
All right, Councilman here, and then, and then.
Before we go there of that request, that thought, what is the normal C I P installment and from us, and how often is it done?
The rate, you mean, is it five? It used to be five cent based on the old tax value. What is it now? Four? So if you, if you kick that back up to five, that means that's set aside. I don't even see the the spreadsheet that shows, you know, it used to be a long spreadsheet to show the outgoing years for everything in the C I P. But it's kind of, it's kind of disjointed with these various books.
So you're saying it's four percent of the budget
Yeah.
comes in that goes to our C I P projects? The tax rate that goes to our projects, right?
Yes, sir.
So, so, so that, that means what in dollars?
Eight million, ten million.
So ten, so eight, ten, which whatever the number there is, that's what went in for what, twenty-four, twenty-five? For twenty-four, what, what, is that what you're saying what went in then? The ear, the, the earlier budget? Not what we're looking at for now?
So in other words, those, those projects that we had, it's usually a little easier if it's all on one sheet. You can see public safety, you see infrastructure, you see all of that. Right now, it's kind of
Where is that in the, in the book?
Well, you got a separate book, but it's in, each one's got its own section, so it's hard to like track all of that.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
But what you're saying is that, yes, there's some amount that covers the the debt service of those things that we have coming up in the next five years. So because they changed the the values that instead of it being five point something cents that it used to be, it's four cent. So is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
So if I can go back, if there is a typically Byron, I think, had said, or in out years, we're looking at five hundred thousand, not this upcoming year, where it was one point two or one point five. But if, if Councilman Thompson's interest is to say that we hold the one point two that we have, but in future years we want to maintain since one point two is essentially half a penny on the tax rate at the moment. If that's your interest in the direction of council, that in out years, that unless you tell us differently, or we just come up broke, busted, we always put a minimum of one point two towards sidewalks. If that is, is the direction of council.
This year need to be one point five, next year need to be one.
And because, but I would tell, I would also say this too. Your four cents is also debt service that pays for your other projects too. So it is, you're putting one point two million dollars a year to or an additional half a cent on your four and a half cents on tax rate for C I P. I would want us, we can definitely, if that's the direction you want to give, we can come back with what the impacts would look like and how we could move through the list. But I also want to come back and also talk about how that accelerates sidewalks maybe over the other hundred million dollars in public safety needs that we have that may not be funded. The additional fire stations that are there, police training facility, which was the number one item on the public safety needs assessment in twenty fifteen. Was that it, Mayor?
Yeah, but you know, you got a public, some, some of that public safety, that bond money is funding that, so I guess you could kind of see.
None of the public, none of the, we've got three more fire stations in the, out of the sixty. And you have other stations. But again, if that's the direction, want us to bump it up to one point five or one point two every year, whatever equivalent would be, we can definitely take that direction for upcoming fiscal years and can come back in August or September with exactly what that looks like as well. That's the interest.
Councilman Honduras, here, did you? I see your button push, but I think you spoke.
No, I've already spoken, Mayor. I don't know.
So I got Honduras, and then I had a point.
Assistant Director Reeves or Director Sheila Thompson, back. In today, June fifth, twenty twenty-five, what's a linear foot of sidewalk cost or or mile, whichever?
Yeah, I just, that's why I walked up here. So a million dollars will get you between two to four miles, assuming fifty dollars a side, a linear foot of sidewalk, that's really low. Typically, we budget around hundred, depending on right of way issues. So a million dollars will get you between two to four miles.
And we have how many miles identified?
I believe the study identified about forty miles. About forty miles.
Guys, I, I mean, one penny of the ad valorem tax rates predicted to be about two million four hundred and eighty thousand?
Two, three, four, eight.
Two million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand. We should be able to dedicate at least a penny this year and in future years. That, that's just my opinion. I would be supportive of that. If you put in a motion, I would second it.
Council, Councilman Thompson.
Well, let me just say that I would wait for the study to come back before I agree to a penny and not half a penny, because as the Dr. Hewitt said, I want to make sure that we're not taking from other public services that we've already put into the C I P. Those have a priority to make sure that we take care of our first responders.
So you know, my, my, my piece to this is, I think we've shown our, our public safety commitment with a million and a half. Like, we've solidly said, do this this year to fix that. I think there's no way that I, I can support adopting this budget with no additional contribution to those sidewalks, even if it's just one project that we identified, which was the worst one. Because every time somebody gets hit, every time somebody gets killed, every time you see these people walking to and from the grocery stores where you've got several apartment complexes like Cliffdale and and four oh one, where dirt paths, where they're walking in the street to get around trees, impeding into a path that's not there. I mean, I think we got to really, even if if she says a million goes with that, I mean, I think starting that on a recurring is fine, conflating it all in a larger picture is fine, but I think we got to have some investment this year in that.
Will that be? If that request, what you're asking is done and it happens, will that come with a prioritized list, listing, additional new prioritized listing, or the prioritized listing that we already have?
Well, I mean, I think they, they know where the, they are. I just think that we say the, the most commonly used one that had, will have the most greatest impact project, which should be prioritized. I don't know how to study calculated all of that, but when you ride around the day, you see these people walking with the kids and they, they are in the street almost with it. I mean, you you've got neighborhoods and there's no access to and from these, these retail outlets. So.
Yes, sir.
Two studies, and there's two priority lists. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Byron and Ms. Sheila. You have the pedestrian plan, you have the supplemental pedestrian plan study. And that one is around schools. So if we're going to prioritize anything, I think we should prioritize the supplemental plan to make sure that we got sidewalks around these schools where our kids are going to be safe. As me and the mayor pro temp was talking about, what's on the list and what's not on the list, let's make that a priority. And if you want to put some money into it, I'm looking at a million dollars from another study that we can take and put into the sidewalks.
Yeah, we got to have some business activity now. You, you're not going to be able to pay for this without some business economic movement, but I, I, I mean, I just think, again, counsel, with us not even discussing sources of funding, they're just saying, we'll handle it. I mean, do, do, there were some questions we had, are, are the, are the vacant positions that we have frozen that we're funding? Do we have any bandwidth there? You don't have the, the money coming in from the county with this one time money? These are one time discussions that we're having. Is there any bandwidth there? You know, you always have to look at the cost. They're just saying, tell us what you want. We'll, we'll fit it in, you know? Is there any room to move our our, our fund balance percentage down or up? C I P amount allocation down or up, those kind of things?
Yes. So let me say what we were trying to do with the budget, and I love this conversation. Because Jeff whispered to me that if y'all were to dedicate a penny to the capital funding plan, that would allow for debt service to cover the supplemental paid plan over time. Again, that's borrowing money and whatnot else. The things that we did and to balance the budget last week that we talked about on Monday were responsive to what we heard were council's priorities. And I'm just going to run back through those. The council has a strong interest, Dr. Here in particular, in making sure that we maintain a twelve percent goal. You have a ten percent policy. We achieved that with about thirty-five thousand dollars over because that was what we heard, we thought we heard from all of you, was an interest. How did we do that? We adjusted the vacancy rate up. How did we do that as well? We also went ahead and assigned the money from the sales tax agreement, the last quarter, that was, that we just inked out a few months back with the county, that two and a half that we, Jeff believes we will receive, receive from not to be able to maintain all the way up to maybe the three and a half that the county did. We put that into the fund balance. So that was how that was done. If the interest is to add, we thought we also were responsive to council's interest on sidewalks. In the past, during the out years, Byron said that we were spending half a million dollars. Again, next year in the budget right now in front of you, you're at one point two or one point five. Is that? One point two. So you're already in this upcoming year's budget. So any additional money that you program for that will help us get through the list even faster. But this is, represents our fourth budget work session. It is on the calendar based upon what we heard on Monday. I mean, this is council's decision, at your choice. We were looking for an adoption on, on Monday. It was, it's on your agenda for adoption on Monday. And so we can still accommodate anything by just switching out the budget ordinance or moving this to the last meeting in, or held a special meeting if necessary. But just tell us how much and where you'd like to see movement, and we can, we can come back with options for you, or we can, as the mayor said, we may adjust the fund balance to accommodate that and hope that we get more grants, or hope that maybe as the counties assumes that we're going to see more revenue from the sales tax agreement than what we believe.
And, and to counsel, keep in mind, you know, the reason why the C I P part works is that you put it there, even if it's not funded this year, you, you've got a, a, a tracking system that commits you to it, which is why that that's usually helpful, like the splash pads. I support it, and I support doing it, but do we encumber the four fifty now, and it's not designed, it's not located, it's not bid out? If it's on the C I P, you got the commitment that you can take back to your community to say, I've got this planned into the budget. But it, it gives us the use of four hundred thousand dollars to, you know, at least start it, or some of that. You know, you can get the design part of it done, or you can get some of the process going, but you are still at least, Michael, how long does it take from start to finish to locate and make a decision to say it's going to go here to water being turned on and kids running through it? So you're talking, you, you know, you got some room there. That's all I'm giving as an example. I support it a hundred percent. But what I'm saying is, on the, on the C I P, you, you say, hey, the city's going to do this, kind of like we, we did Black Voices, or we did the History Center at times. You, you, you had certain amounts that weigh in over the next two or three years before you really needed to have it all in place, so.
Councilman Thompson, you had your light?
Good point, Mr. Mayor, and Dr. Newton asked for some clarity, so he, I mean, Dr. Hewitt asked for some clarity, so here's my clarity. I propose that we use another fifty, five hundred thousand dollars for our sidewalk plan. And that we use it for our supplemental pedestrian plan and create a priority list. And we contact all those who did not submitted requests from those other thirteen schools that did not get a chance to collaborate with the study to see where they would fit in that priority plan. And we go from top to bottom to use that five hundred thousand dollars. And then for next year, we put aside at least half a cent, which would give us at least another one point two million dollars every year to, for our sidewalk pedestrian plan to make sure that we're at least combating some of that sidewalk walkability study that was performed over the entire city. Is that good enough, Dr. Hewitt? That's going to be up to staff.
Here, one time. As you're proposing a recurring expense in out years, we would look for one time funding to match this year's budget.
This year, for five hundred.
And so that we'd also be able to protect what we also thought was in interest of council, maintaining the lowest tax rate in thirty years.
Yes, sir. Yes.
That'd be correct.
And, and that will bring us down to what?
It'll be a little bit under twelve percent.
But is that, is that factoring in everything now?
As, as I mentioned, the county is, is, is more bullish on the number of that we would get back from the sales tax. Jeff is probably conservative, which is where we want him to be as budget and, and finance. And and to the other point, while, I will just say this, while we have half a million, have a million dollars in studies for the U D O and for the permanent inspections review and things that, that are on the list, there are, is likely, and Kelly's not, I, I don't know if we knew from your review or mayor yours and, and from discussion with the companies, how long those studies will take? Because if you're making progress payments on some of them, while we'll have to encumber the money upfront for those, there very well could be that we would not expense all of that money in one year either. And so there are other things, as the mayor talked about as well, that we would be able to look at, but that would be the easiest, or we could go back and we could see if we
Question.
could adjust the vacancy savings again.
All right, Councilman here.
Okay. So if we take, if we do the one time from the fund balance, that's going to take us below twelve as we, as we're moving into, and we pray we don't get any, but we're moving into hurricane and tornado season. And, and which is a lot of the main purpose that we try to keep that there or stay above. And then we, we say, what, five percent is coming in whenever the budget is passed to the C I P?
Four cents, four cents.
It's four cents.
Okay, four cents. So I'm just. Okay.
And Dr. Here, I can help with this. If we had a hurricane where we had to expense, let's say, thirty million dollars before the federal government came in, Jeff, could we find that money?
We could.
We, the fund balance percentages, the eight percent, which is calculated different by the, by the state, required by the state of the current L G C, is just basically what allows you to borrow money. You have a ten percent policy and a twelve percent goal. And I, I, I'm, again, I'm relying Jeff and Tiffany Murray. I'm not sure if she's
Back there.
Okay, I need my directors on the front row again, as I, we had mentioned the last time we were here. Did we not discuss that? Did we not discuss that? Are they on the front row? So I can see them. So just asking for clarity, Dr. Newton and Tiffany Murray. So I could see y'all when I wanted to call them. I wanted to call them. But we're good, Jeff, if, but Dr. Here, what we would do is we would scramble today, and we would look for any ways that we could either delay some projects or initiatives that we have. Because again, we clearly understood that was a concern of y'all, of yours and of the council, and we would hope to have a roll-up. If that's the only change that y'all make in the budget, that we would be able to get back out to y'all by tomorrow.
We're talking about if there's an add up of 500,000.
Yes, sir.
colleague is asking.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this question is for Ms. Sheila or either Byron. I know from all the sidewalk conversations I've had, that if we do it on DOT roads, the cost of sidewalks is split. I think it's 80/20. Would this still pertain when we're doing our supplemental pedestrian plan, if we wanted to put sidewalks in the DOT road, they would pay 80%, we would pay 20%?
It depends on if it's associated with a roadway project. If we were to just go out on a DOT road by ourselves, no, we would be paying 100% of that. But if it's part of, for instance, Rayford Road's getting widened,
Right.
We're paying 20% of the sidewalk.
Correct.
Well, if there was existing sidewalk, we don't pay anything. But if there were gaps where there was no sidewalk, we would pay 20%.
Gotcha.
So, but if we want to go on a DOT road where there's no planned widening project or anything like that, we would have to bear the full cost.
Can we put that as part of our priority list? That would save us money, wouldn't it?
We do.
They did that anyway.
We do that anyway.
Thank you. And I'm, I concur with the, Dr. Hewitt's recommendation, and that is my motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And, and so to, to that point, before I go to Councilmember here, counsel, keep in mind that they're gonna still always look to leverage opportunity, you know, to, what's bondable will be bondable. You know, if a hurricane comes tomorrow, had to have $30 million, you've got a risk management fund that they borrow against, so take money out of them. So there are ways to meet the liquidity. I'm hoping that in it is stuff, they'll, they'll be scouring the earth for grants and stuff. But whatever's bondable, our, our debt capacity, you know, there's such thing as good debt. Growing places use it to get ahead and not use all their cash up. So I'm hoping that we will bond what's bondable, you know, because we've got the ability to bring it back in versus using all of our, of our cash flow. So, but I know they're already on that and they'll bring back. Jeff, I hope that you'll bring back something so we can have a more, a better understanding about the source of where you all are meeting these needs, so that council's not assuming that it's putting us in any compromising position or any, any of that kind of stuff. So.
Yes, I believe Dr. Hewitt's talked about doing some policy paperwork and some additional work sessions with council into the fall. So we will, one of the ones we have slated is to bring back the debt portfolio and kind of how all the debt works and hangs together.
All right. So we've got Mayor Pro Temp and then Councilmember here, and there's the motion on the floor. So this is discussion.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know if this is the time. I wanted to kind of go back and talk about the, the studies for the UDO. Should I wait?
Permitting?
Permitting.
I mean, we, I think we talked about it a little bit.
Okay. I, I just want, I just want to make sure that as we talk about that and we say it's just another study and that, so the listening audience will understand that this study, these two studies that we have put into the budget are probably the most important things that we're going to put in the budget to grow our city. And the perfect example of it was, and the aha moment of it was, was in the UDO committee, when we looked at that graph that we showed at the meeting the other night of Cary up here that has 180,000 people, and we have 208. They are on our heels. And for, to go and get housing and build housing in Cary is so much easier than it is here. And we just, all these things that came up to us about putting for affordable housing, for workforce development housing, that we just did not have. We had it, but we didn't know that we had it. So with, a lot of that is going to bring all that out. So for the listening audience, those two studies will make life easier for people to come and do business in Fayetteville, and our staff will know exactly what the meaning of everything is altogether. So with that being said, thank you.
All right. Councilmember here, you had something to follow up?
Yes, sir. Just, and, and it's just maybe a, a somewhat a summary coming out of, in my, in my mind. When we, we look at, and I support the sidewalks also, big supporter with my, with my colleague, Mr. Thompson. But if we look at possibly taking the 500 one-time fund that will lower our fund balance, and then we have a new tax system that was high on our residents that we promised that we were going to do all that we could to support them as far as what they would be paying away from the city. And if we look at a possible geo bond for, assuming we're talking about sidewalks, then we're looking to go right back on the backs of the residents. And if we look at if a tornado or something or a, a high emergency comes to the city and is, we're looking at borrowing if we would have to deduct whatever we would have to from the one-time fund balance. So that means that we're going to have to borrow that money. So we, we know where that payment is going to be coming from. And, and we're not 100% sure if, what type of federal assistance that we're going to be able to get from the federal government just due to what is being explained and, and chatter thrown over to our, our western folk of western North Carolina. So I'm just kind of just tossing that up there and see which way it falls.
All right. So, so Jeff, I think it's helpful, one, if we get the real number of what the fund balance percentage is. If you don't have it today, we need, we can estimate it based on county coming back, you know, there's some laggards in the sales tax. I mean, a real number, because if we're thinking it's 12 and it's, and it's 14, that's
We have that, Mayor. We have that.
Because it wasn't, wasn't baked in early.
It isn't, it isn't the question and answers that we provided the council on.
Well, no, he, he was missing the sales tax on there.
No, we added, it's 12%.
Including the 3 million?
34,000. We did it at 3.2. It was in the presentation Monday evening, the slides we gave you. And I think it's also in the, I don't remember which question, but it's in the chronicles. You're over the 12% by just under $35,000.
Proposal then, Mayor, would be that I would ask Jeff to look at that again, and we would probably adjust that rate to be consistent with what the county, who actually also helps us look at that, and meet them somewhere in the middle to come up with the $500,000. It may put us below 12, but we will be able to report back on that, we hope, by noon tomorrow, and tell you exactly what that looks like.
And you had the, the closeout funds, the vacant positions completely done, solid numbers on that?
We pushed that number up to 12%. So we got a little more aggressive on that. As you kind of mentioned, we've estimated again the sales tax dollars. So we feel like we've turned all the levers at this point that we can to try to take advantage of kind of keeping the tax rate where it was recommended and meeting the council's desire. So if the council's interest is to push up again that sales tax number, to try to show that fund balance or to have that fund balance number higher, that's absolutely something we can do.
No, I don't think we're saying that, but we'll know pretty quick is that those quarters start to come in, what that number's projecting on.
You'll know by, in October.
All right, all right. So council, there's a motion on the floor to, to add the 500,000. Second about Councilmember Mahndros, we've discussed it. All right. Look to you for votes on that. Uh, Councilmember McNair?
That is on green, sir.
Okay. All right. Most of Carrie. So, so I guess counsel will get, will clean all this up and you'll get us some kind of idea of how you made all this magic happen before this is up for adoption in a week. So. Did you? Well, that's two votes for yellow, because you're voting for her too, right?
Oh, okay.
So this is just theory today, that, that we, we want $500,000. I guess everybody is going to have to understand the budget before we vote for it, I hope. So you're going to come back with us to understand what the impacts of these changes are?
Yes, sir. We've done that. This is, we know, the only
We just added it to that. So how?
The only thing that you added was 500,000. That's the only thing that y'all have added. And the only question is where we take it from. The council?
Right.
Yeah, that's the only thing. So for half a
Well, 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 we added, we added to meet that economic development thing, which was like $75,000 difference.
We, that's, that's, that's what was your word, budget dust.
Okay.
Half a million dollars is, is real money, and we will find that and we will roll that up for you by noon tomorrow. What we found is the longer we let y'all continue to bring stuff to the table, the harder it gets for us to close it up. So if it's $500,000 and that's
Y'all have some answers to bother.
Mayor, we've had, we've had answers. We've had answers. And so what I'd love to do is, I, I hear you on the yellow part, so we're going to work on that to make sure we can try to still achieve all the interest that folks have. And I would even ask Jeff, if the number now is not 500,000 for that, but also 100,000 extra for economic development, we're not going to take the fund balance down here, here, here. But the mayor, if those
Yeah, I'm not talking about the
I, I know that. So that's what I'm saying. So if, if what we're looking for, I'm just rounding it up, is $600,000, 500 for sidewalks and about 100,000 for economic development, give us until noon tomorrow to come back with some strategies and numbers for you, even if that means that we, if, if you want the fund balance to say, do everything you can to keep the fund balance at 12%, then we will come back with you with clarity around what that looks like, to take the money from elsewhere to fund those two initiatives so that you can adopt the budget with clarity on Monday.
Let me give you some more insight than Dr. Newton, Dr. Hewitt. If the hiccup is for us not to go under our 12% for our general fund, then take the 500 and go to 400, just to get us at the 12%. I would be satisfied with that, just so that we can pass the budget and everybody will be satisfied.
If 100 changed it, but I think what's, what's, what's missing in the conversation, right, is, it is important because the end result you want, it's like a math problem. You're starting with the answer first.
Right.
We don't want to dip under a certain amount. So are you going to take the 450 for the splash pad and break it off over two years to, to keep track with the designs? Can't you take a little bit from here and a little bit there and still get the same goal? Is any of that lovable, where you take out, you know, if it's a brick and mortar project that you borrow against? So us understanding where it's coming from is just as important as, as the outcome to adopt it, just to make sure it meets the 12%. So I don't, I don't
I get that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Everybody has a different opinion about everything.
Right.
When we talk about the fund balance, I have a different opinion. The standard is 8%. Our goal is 10%. Our policy is 12%. We can come up with another policy, make it 15%. But then it is, you got money sitting here that we're not using that we could be using to fix sidewalks to keep people safe. So it's all about how you look at.
Yeah, yeah, true. All right. But I guess
We can't, we can't look, we don't have a, a terrible winter season crystal ball, fall season crystal ball. We, we don't have that. And I know how many of us that have sit here over the years, we've seen the very, very, very high damages in some of those years. The last one was this large major flood that we had. Okay. And how that dug into there. So we just can't huff and puff and blow our eyes and say, we're going to do this and do that, and forget about the fund balance or whatever percentage is. Now we're at the 12. I want us to, my opinion to consider to try to stay there, see which way those additional funds can come from, and then I'll be okay.
And I think staff heard it. That's my point, that, that we're not giving them a chance. I think they're going to come back with a proposal that meets the interest of what we're saying. We just, right now, we're trying to get into the how versus the what. We give the what, they come back with the how, right? All right. I like it. All right.